I'm out. And remember, since we're being recorded, talk into the microphone.
Even if you have a loud voice.
Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Roll call. Ed Wiegman.
Here.
Cliff Forkerson.
Here.
Stacy Parks.
Here.
Janet Brown.
Here.
James Schmercy.
Here.
Do we have any comments or revisions and/or an approval for the previous meeting's minutes from September 17, 2025?
I make a motion, we approve.
I'll second that.
And what do you two pick who's gonna motion? James?
Go ahead.
Okay, so roll call on that is Ed Wiegman.
Yes.
Cliff Forkerson.
Yes.
Stacy Parks.
Yes.
Janet Brown.
Yes.
James Schmercy.
Yes.
We have one case in front of us today, case number 25-01, 011. It's 1211 Harrison Drive, 159.065E3, off-street parking. Summary and a brief review of the case.
Okay, so the petitioner has installed a secondary driveway that does not meet ordinance, and he would like it to remain.
Do we have anyone that wants to speak on this matter?
That'd be you, Steve.
Steve, if you can state your name, your address, and you swear to tell the truth.
Stephen Lee Zook, 1211 Harrison Drive, Clinton, Iowa. Yes, I swear to tell the truth.
Go ahead.
Well, I guess to start in the beginning, I'm gonna go way back. I'm gonna go back like 15 years ago. There was a problem, similar situation about me parking in my yard. I would pull up, and we got several vehicles, so we would have to jockey them and stuff. I got children with cars. I came down and spoke with the city attorney. I believe his name was Matt at the time, come in his office right here. And he told me that I could. I know I've heard from Karen has a problem with it being gravel, which that's, we're gonna get into that ordeal too. But he told me 15 years ago that for parking purposes, I'm on a point, a dangerous curve like this. I needed a wider driveway, and he told me I could put down gravel beside my driveway. So as far as the gravel thing goes, I was told by him 15 years ago that I could put gravel down to make my driveway wider. So I got permission there from him 15 years ago. Then I came to the, I believe, city engineer, Jason, and here. Ask him. The paperwork says it must be a hard surface. That's all they could give me before I'd done this. All they could give me is that it says it has to be a hard surface. I wanted rock in my yard. You've heard the term "hard as a rock." So I'm assuming rock is good. He couldn't tell me that I couldn't. Now, all this has come about, and supposedly there's a definition of what a hard surface is, and like I said, it was never given to me, so I installed gravel. I got a permit, I have the permit here. And another thing, as far as the gravel driveways, I'm not for sure why they even came to my house. That's another question that I would like answered if it's that easy, is why they come to my house when there's 27 gravel driveways on my street? I got pictures of all of them right here. There is gravel roads in the city of Clinton, all down 14th, all along a central, back behind a central credit union beside the bluff. That's all gravel city roadways. She said I can't have gravel because the gravel gets out in the road and gets in the storm drains. I don't even have no storm drains within 200 yards of my house. Nowhere, there's no storm drains. So back to the permit, I got a, I live on a point, as you can see on that map. When you back out of my driveway, you can't see what's coming to your left. The neighbor's place is raised up. So when you're backing out, the cars come around there at 45, 50 mile an hour, you can't see them until they're right there. It's too late, you're already in the road. So I got water damage in my house, destroyed my basement. We did a renovation this spring. I had to dig up my entire front yard. I had to dig all the way around my foundation of my house, and I had to have somebody come in and spray foam, and we put piping, French drain systems in and run the water down and blah, blah, blah. So I come down, I got a permit to put a parking spot on the side of my house where I was gonna go out and park on the side, comply with the ordinance. We got up there, we started digging, it's not gonna work. I've got a sewer up there on the side of the house. It was gonna be too steep, it was gonna dump everything on my neighbor's place. So we had to kibosh, the driveway plan was out. So then, we've got this thing already dug up, so I said, "Why not?" Buried my railroad ties and put down a nice rock driveway. So that's what I've done, and now basically, I have a circle drive that I can drive up my driveway, and I can go out the other side of my property. That's what I would like to, I'd like to keep. So.
So I just have a question. So you say that you had a permit, what was?
To cut the curb and put an additional driveway in. And that's what I did, and so I did just what he agreed to me, where I broke the rule of law, where I broke the rule, the rule. I went up, and instead of going another 20 feet this way, I turned it to the left 10 feet. That's all I did, and connected it to existing gravel that I had permission from the city attorney to put down in the front for additional parking. So, yeah.
I do have his driveway permit here, if anybody would like to see it, where he actually shows, he shows he is going to be in compliance and go to a rear or side yard parking or to rear yard parking. So I do have that permit if you would like. So he did get his curb cut.
I mean, I don't wanna be noisy, but as a civil engineer, I know what a hard surface is. Did anyone, no one here could tell him that means concrete or asphalt?
So I am not the?
I've got it highlighted right here.
Okay.
And this is what Jason highlighted for me. And he told me, all it says is hard surface. He goes, "If I find out anything else between now and then, that that says that you have to have something else," he goes, "I'll call you and let you know." He never called me. So, and like I said, the rock, it's one-inch clean road rock. That's what we use, we put on our roadways. It's packed down, I mean, it's professionally done, you know? I didn't, as she said, dump gravel in my yard, you know? I spent a bunch of money to make it look nice, and I think I did make it look nice. In fact, I think it's the nicest driveway on the street. That's why I'm kinda confused, is why they're at my house complaining about me parking in my yard when the People Caddy Corner got a 1978 camper that's got two tires on it, and it looks like it's fixing to fall over. And then the house next to that has got, yeah, there's a lot of other targets in my neighborhood besides me. So that's why I'm wondering why they end up at my house. I think I got a good idea, but...
Okay. If there's no other comments or questions, do we want to continue on with the staff report in review?
Did anybody else, any other questions? Okey-dokey. So this was tagged by the code enforcement department that he had the gravel driveway in his front yard, which sent Steve to our office to apply for a variance, because a driveway in a front yard is required to be hard surface. Yes, gravel is hard, but it's not a hard, impenetrable surface or permeable surface, like blacktop, cement, or pavers. Okay? I did reach out to Public Works, and I asked them about, hey, gravel in the front yards? And he goes, "No, not if we've got sewer system, you know, curb and gutter system that goes to the stormwater, because the gravel washes out," and it does, and actually, if you look on Mr. Zook's picture, there's already gravel in the, or in my picture, I think it is, where you're showing the gravel driveway, you already got gravel coming down on the, it washes away, it does wear away. Public Works says, "No, it causes a big problem with the sewer system with the sediment in there." But going back, we need to go to our zoning ordinance, and our zoning ordinance says your driveway has to go to a side yard or a garage. Okay, so front yard parking, you can park in a front yard if your driveway goes to a side yard or to a garage. So he was issued an additional curb cut to take his driveway to his side yard. He did not do that. He ended up going around because he had an issue with, a topographical issue with it being too sloped. But instead of going back and talking to engineer and saying, "Hey, can I just swoop this around?" He just swooped it around, because engineering would've said, "No, you have to go to your side yard or to a garage." Like, if you think about what a house looks like, when the garage is right in line with the house, you have a driveway there and you can park there. Okay, if you're not going to a garage, then you have to go to a side or rear yard parking, which it's, this is not. So it's in violation there. Yes?
I just had a question. So is the issue that it's gravel, or the issue of what direction it went?
I've got the same question.
Both. So you have, one issue is your front yard parking, where you're allowed to park on a hard surface, if it leads to a, and that's actually 159065E3, off-street parking requirements. Off-street parking is allowed in the front yard of an R district if located on a approved driveway providing access to a garage, carport, or side yard parking area of dwelling. Okay? So we didn't quite get there. We didn't get to a side yard, and we didn't get to a garage. Okay? And then we go to approved surface, and I go to 7907, which is in a zoning ordinance, but it says off-street parking within the front yard shall be prohibited unless on a hard surface driveway. Okay? Hard surface driveway.
Rock.
So we have a memo, M25-021, hard surface established, that gravel driveways do not meet hard surface requirements because gravel lacks structural stability and continued sediment into the storm system, reduced draining capacity, and increasing maintenance. Now, there are little blurbs when they are allowed. If you do not have a curb and gutter system where you have a storm system, you can have a gravel driveway. So example, Second Avenue South, when you get out a little bit farther, yeah, you have streets, but you don't have the curb and gutter, you have gravel shoulders. If you have gravel shoulders, yeah, you can have a gravel driveway, because you're not going to get into the storm system. If you have a construction site, like we have going on right over here, you don't want that mud coming back and forth, so you want a temporary gravel driveway, so that the mud isn't going out in the street all the time, although you still get a lot of mud because those are some heavy trucks.
So is there a storm system here?
No.
He's on a curb and gutter, so there is a gutter. Now, it might not be right in front of his house or near his house.
The nearest storm drain for me is down the hill on 15th.
So when the water runs away, it would run into a storm sewer system.
You know, I've got some pictures here that I'd like y'all to look at. This first one right here, you see that storm drain right there? That's a storm drain, sitting on the edge of a gravel road. That's a city Clinton road. See that gravel, you see that storm drain?
It's got a curb next to it though.
Can I see it?
The next storm drain from my house, it would, the gravel, this is what the gravel would have to do to get to the storm drain from my house. It would have to go up the hill from my house and turn left and go down 15th Street. 150 yards down 15th Street is the nearest storm drain from my house. I've already walked, I've already walked all the curbs. Here's, if y'all wanna look at these, the ones that says Zook on it, that's my driveway, and the ones that say Harrison Drive, that's all the other driveways on my street. The 26 houses that I had to go and get signatures from about this meeting, that's their houses in that thing right there, in the pictures you see.
So I'm gonna go back to the exceptions.
Every one of them's got a gravel driveway.
So back to the exceptions, we do have some properties in town that had gravel driveways. We don't make them pave them, they can continue to have the gravel as long as it's maintained and upheld, upkept. Should they make a substantial improvement, well, at that point, they have to then hard surface their driveway. So if you have a gravel driveway, nobody's driving around making you put one in, but you can't put a new one in. And that's where the problem happened with Steve, is he put a new gravel driveway in.
I actually connected, I actually enlarged it. I connected it to an existing driveway that I had permission to put in by the city attorney.
Your driveway, your garage, though, is cement, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and you widened it a little bit with some gravel, right?
My driveway, actually, why is it goes two directions. My driveway goes in the front, to the, to the right of my garage toward the front of my house, and my driveway actually goes around the back of the house. The garage used to be behind the house. They tore that down, built a new garage, so they remapped the driveway. Like I said, the only thing I did was added on with the gravel, added on to an existing gravel drive that I have permission from the city attorney to put down. So I added on to that to get what you see here in these pictures. And like I said, it's well-maintained, it's packed down, and I go out there, if I see little rocks starting to trickle over, two or three little rocks will trickle over the curb, I go down earth my broom, I mop them back up in my yard, and I keep my gravel. I keep my place looking nice. My grass is all sprayed, so it's bright green, I mean, I'm trying to make the place look nicer. I'm not a, I didn't spend thousands of dollars to make it look like a hellhole, you know? I'm trying to curb a hill and property value and make it safer for my family to get in and out of my driveway. That's the biggest problem that I have, is the safety.
So anyway?
This is so much easier.
Yeah, I reached out to Public Works to talk to them, say, "Hey, do you have a policy or what do you've got going on?" And he sent me a pretty, pretty good detailed list, and he said, "Gravel shifts, it degrades with weather, snow removal, requires ongoing maintenance, and it does not meet engineering standards." So that's why they don't allow new gravel driveways.
What about all gravel businesses?
Again, she just said that, if there's, if they make a major change, they have to apply to code. So let's say Leslie Electric down there, wherever they're at, they have a dirt lot, and they, I don't need a building permit for my bathroom. Their code review would make them upgrade this. So it's opening a can of worms. I do wanna do that, but here's everything else you need to do to make it compliant.
And again, there are exceptions, existing maintained gravel driveways, gravel road connections. So if somebody builds a house on a gravel road, we're not gonna make them put a cement driveway in. Gravel shoulder connections and temporary driveways for construction.
I'd also like to say, my driveway is better maintained than all of them city gravel roads that I just showed you right there. If you don't think they are, go drive down beside a central one time between bluff, and it'll beat the living hell out of your car. Go up and drive up my place and look at it. I keep it maintained.
So what I have here is it's not meeting a couple of different requirements. One, it doesn't lead to a garage or side yard parking, and two, it is not the required hard surface, and therefore, that's why he was denied and sent to you guys, and that's why we recommend you denying the variance. Does anybody have any questions for me?
I do, so technically, he can't get to his garage.
Well, yes, he can, because there's a driveway right here.
No, I'm saying, the addition you pointed direct, does go to his garage, technically. Technically, the longer drive, so if this was concrete, would it still be an issue?
It would.
So when they issued his permit for the driveway, did anyone ever inspect it?
I can't speak to that. I did ask engineering to be here, but I can't.
They did not, they did not inspect it, and he told me that if I went with a contractor that he recommended, it would save me $100 inspection fee. So I don't believe that he inspected it. I was gonna have another contractor do it, and he said, "If you do, I gotta pay an inspector to go out. If you use this contractor here, we don't send nobody out." So that's what he told me, so.
Should we see if Jason is available? You can, can you run it, see if Jason's available?
So basically, what I'm asking for, I'm asking to be allowed to have a circle drive. That's all I want. I just wanna, I wanna circle drive, and it's gravel. If it comes down to it, and I start concreting it in at a later date, and if that's something we have to do, we might work toward that, you know? I'm not gonna give nobody no promised date, but if that's what would make everybody happy, if it was concrete, I could start doing concrete a little, you know?
So I guess I was giving my question to Karen. So are circle drives not allowed in your yard?
Technically, no. You know what, if he had a circle drive that went right to his driveway, technically, he's not supposed to have two curb cuts. He'd have to be on a corner lot, and to do that, you have to have a street address that can be this street or this street. Jason went ahead and issued him a curb cut, because he goes, "Well, he's close to the corner." So he issued him a curb cut, which caused this conundrum.
Did you, Karen, seeing how you're under oath, did you send Joel to my house because of a personal thing or something that you got against me? Did you ask Joel to go up there and look at this?
Absolutely not.
I'm just wondering why they come to my house when they didn't go to nobody else's? Like you said about the other, there's way more serious stuff going on by my house than they need to worry about my driveway.
Absolutely.
So there's just a question, because that's what I was starting to think, was that you might've told Joel, "Hey, I need you to go up and take a look at this guy, because I've already told him that he's not gonna have this driveway like this."
I'm gonna ask that we calm down.
Okay.
Okay.
Actually?
Otherwise, because I'm gonna say, "We're outta here, and we'll come back next month."
Okay.
So calm down. We have an order here, we have to go by this order.
Okay.
We have two issues. Your driveway did not get built, as you said it would build it, and it got built out of the wrong material. Two items.
Yep, okay.
And if you see anyone else like this that did a driveway, they put it in the wrong spot, they used the wrong material, call us up.
The last thing I would do is what you just asked me to do, is to go call somebody trouble, like somebody has caused me. This has been a lot of missed work, I spent a lot of time to get to this point right here. It's caused me a lot of unnecessary stress.
We're getting up there again.
Hey, listen, that's how I am. That's how I get up here, okay? I get up here.
Again.
This is where we're at.
And come back next month.
Okay.
If you want.
Listen, don't throw rocks when you live in a glass house, okay? Listen to me, listen to me. You're arguing to me about rocks, and this is city property, city roads or gravel?
I don't, I don't wanna talk about this anymore.
Sir, you have a choice. You either settle down.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Or this is all over.
I'm sorry, I won't, I won't talk. Y'all figure out what you wanna do, and tell me if you're gonna allow me to have it, and then I'll go, that's it.
You can talk if we ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Otherwise, I would appreciate it if you would just keep quiet.
I will, I apologize.
Karen, the ordinance says you cannot have a circle drive.
It doesn't say anything about circle drive. It says it has to lead to a hard surface, or I'm sorry, it has to be hard surface, and lead to either side yard or rear yard parking. Side rear yard or carport garage. And that's actually in your packet, and that is?
This is what Jason highlighted, this is all he could find. He said if he found something that said any different, he'd let me know.
I guess my question is, you know, the circle, I keep coming back to the circle drive thing. I mean, if he's willing to concret, I just, so it says it's gonna lead to a garage, but...
Or side yard parking, rear yard parking.
Which one has to lead to a, it's a circle drive, so which one's gonna lead to the garage? You know what I'm saying? So I don't, yeah. Yeah, the gravel, I'm against, but I'm trying to get into the circle drive thing.
I guess he's not clear on that.
Sure.
Is Jason coming?
He is.
Okay.
I mean, technically, it leads to a garage, you know?
And you guys can allow that? I mean, my interpretation was side yard or garage parking. That was my interpretation.
Yeah. Come on in.
Welcome, Jason.
You want this back? Steve, you want this back?
So we have a question. This gentleman got a permit to put a driveway in next to his house to lead to the side of his house. Does that ever get inspected?
Should, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, we actually just, I think it was a curb cut permit.
Okay.
It was, and they had a, I don't know the details exactly, but I think it was a curb cut permit, and we met with Stephen on that.
Can I, can we have you just step to the podium and do all the business? Swear our men.
What, okay, what questions do you have of me?
First, swear our men.
Name, address?
Jason Kraft. I live in Clinton here, 4735 Bellevue Road. I work in the engineering department.
Are you sure to tell the truth?
Yes.
Okay. So our question is, he originally got a permit to put a curb cut in. Did anyone come out to see, because we have two issues here. He put the driveway in the wrong spot, and it's the wrong surface, because no one could tell him what a hard surface definition was.
Okay.
Which in my mind is asphalt or concrete.
Okay. So do people make inspections? Yes, I do. I don't have a firsthand knowledge of that, I didn't do the inspection. I just know that I had conversations with Mr. Zook at the front counter and drew up a little map of how we thought it would be best interpretation of the ordinance where that curb cut and driveway would go.
Okay.
And it was then, at that meeting, my understanding was that that would be a concrete driveway, and that it would lead to the south side of his house.
Okay, like the picture showed on his permit?
On his, yeah, I got that from Dawn. Dawn gave me a copy of his curb cut permit.
So the, I don't remember, is the curb cut in that spot? Is it not in that spot?
Yes.
You wanna see the picture?
The curb cut was done exactly per plan.
Yes.
So that's what we would've inspected.
Just turned left instead of going straight.
That's what we would've inspected, would've been the curb cut. You know, by the time somebody inspects, somebody from our office cannot possibly be everywhere, every day, all the time. So by the time somebody drives by and inspects maybe what would be a driveway, that's how it probably would've looked.
Okay.
So the curb cut was done by like Diamond Cut or somebody, I think, I don't remember who did it. Yeah, and then we just consider it, you know, it's an open permit, it's not, the driveway aspect of it was, in our minds, never completed. The next we heard of it was a letter that Mr. Zook brought to my attention from the community development department. Does that answer your question?
I mean, it clarifies it with me, I don't know.
When the community, was it community, what?
That was Joel's department down there.
Code enforcement, community development.
Code enforcement, sorry, yeah.
And was this just a normal, that they would've gone out and looked at it, or someone told them to do that?
Oh, I don't know. I'm not sure. But for us, we have a curb cut permit on file, and with our understanding, that curb cut was gonna be constructed, as per the picture shows. And it was our further understanding that there was going to be, based on Steve's conversation with me, the driveway was gonna be constructed alongside the back of the house. That's all we had knowledge of. You know, and so whatever anybody else does, they don't always tell the city about it. So if somebody's driving by and they notice it, especially somebody like nuisance or code enforcement, you know, they don't, like if you had weeds growing in your front yard that were six feet tall, they would notice that, rather than, you know, being, somebody would call them and tell them about it. they would, they would notice that rather than, you know, being, somebody would call them and tell them about it. So it's not surprising that they may have just noticed that the driveway was in the front yard, and that that it was gravel, I think.
So to keep this thing moving, do we want to have a legal review? From your report, from your standpoint.
Well, hang on, I believe you have to approve my staff report.
Yeah, I was gonna make a motion to approve the.
Staff report?
Yeah.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and seconded. Ed Weigle.
Yes.
Cliff Wilkerson.
Yes.
Stacy Parks.
Yes.
Janet Brown.
Yes.
James Schmerzy.
Yes.
So can we have our legal review, please?
Okay, so there's been discussion about the fact that the driveway doesn't comply with the city zoning ordinance on a couple different grounds. One, it wasn't put in where it was intended to go, it sounds like, and we don't have a hard surface road. But the point is, he's making an application to be excused from those requirements by seeking the variance. So your responsibility as a zoning board is to determine whether his application for a variance from not complying with the zoning ordinance is justified under the variance requirements. And you have to look at basically two-step analysis. And in my opinion, the original analysis that was attached to the original packet correctly sets out the test for a bit, for whether a variation should be granted. There's a, a, an analysis that looks at whether conditions have been affect, certain conditions have been affected. And if none of those conditions exist, then you go to the second analysis to determine whether a variance should be granted under subsection four, paragraph B of the Iowa, or of the Clinton ordinance. And. So that, so that, in my view, is, is your responsibility from a legal standpoint. You're not to, the debate over the fact that he is a comply, there isn't a debate over whether he complied with the ordinance. He's here to seek permission not to comply.
Correct.
Okay, so we've already voted to accept the staff report. Roll call?
Now we go to our meet requirements, our checklist, our eight-item checklist, nine item, eight item.
Okay. Item number one, proceedings are taped, printed minutes, date of meeting, and roll call.
Yes.
Number two, appeal properly submitted?
Yes.
Number three, proof of publication?
Yes.
Number four, has the petitioner notified all adation property owners?
Yes.
Have, does anyone reply back?
I, I didn't hear from anybody.
Okay. Item number five, chairman administers the oath to all persons addressing the board?
Yes.
Item number six, staff report?
Yes.
Item number seven, site plan, necessary descriptive material relating to the intensity extended of use provided?
Yes.
Item number eight, per zoning ordinance one-five-nine dash zero-eight-zero-four and Iowa code section four-one-four dash one-two-two thousand and five, HF six fifty-two, the ZBA board shall have the authority to grant the following variations, but must make the following findings. A, first, the ZBA shall determine that the variation will not, one, impair inadequate supply of light and air to the adjacent property.
Do I got that one right? Hang on. Okay.
Yeah, that's the old one.
Yeah, that's, that's the old one, hang on.
In my opinion, your new one's not correct, by the way.
Okay, if you want to go back to the old one, we can do that.
Is this where we say yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. So it is not going to impair inadequate supply of light or in order to the adjacent property?
No.
Is it going to unreasonably increase the congestion in public streets?
Nope.
Is it unreasonably gonna diminish or repair, impair established property values within the surrounding area?
No.
In any other respect, impair the public health, safety, comfort, morals, or welfare inhabitants of the city?
No.
If the answer to all of the above is in the negative, the board shall have the authority to grant a variance pursuant to section one-five-nine dash zero-eight-zero-four, part B, if the board makes the following two findings. First finding is that a strict application of the applicable zoning restriction relating to the use of the land will impose an unusual and practical difficulty or particular hardship, and that the variation is in harmony with the general purpose and intent, and will merely serve as a convenience to the applicants, but will alleviate some demonstratable and unusual hardship or difficulty so great as to warrant a variation from the comprehensive plan established by the zoning ordinance. At the same time, the surrounding property will be protected.
And when you're making that analysis under that element, the law states that the hardship cannot be the result of the landowner's own doing.
Which could be the misinterpretation of hard surface.
Could be a factor, yeah.
Okay. So it's sort of this discussion among the board. I mean, do we have an issue with a driveway being in the wrong spot? Or do we have an issue with it being it's not a hard surface?
My issue is a hard surface.
And that would be my city's main issue, is it has got one gravel or one paved driveway? He needs to have another paved driveway.
That's.
If they connect, they connect.
That would be my issue, yeah.
So what could we do to say it is in the wrong spot? He can leave it as is, but it has to be cemented? Or it has to match his existing driveway?
So you could put in conditions. If you find that it, it, he met his hardship requirements for the location, or that, you know, my interpretation was wrong on me saying it, it doesn't go to the side yard like he showed, but it, it does connect to his other one, then you can say, okay, it's allowed, but with the condition that he have it hard surfaced, and you would, I would request that you put a time constraint on there. Like, it isn't indefinite, it would have to be in an X amount of time.
So Steve, if we did say you can leave the driveway as is, but it has to be.
I'll concrete.
Paved, concrete, asphalt, we don't have an issue with what it is.
I'll concrete it.
What would be a timeline that would be acceptable?
A couple of years to do it all.
I don't.
Maybe next year, I'll do a couple of chunks. I'd start down by the road and do like, maybe like a ten-foot chunk by the road, and then it'd have a gravel head, and I'd do another ten-foot and do it in like three sections. That way I don't have to spend ten thousand dollars all at once, I can spend three, and three, and three.
I agree, and we're trying to work with you here, but it's just some of us might not be here in three years.
I might not either, so it might not be none of our problems.
I would say probably one year, because most permits are good for one year.
That's fine.
So if we granted this, he would have a, he has, we have a permit, right, a driveway permit?
He'd have to have a flatwork permit, yeah.
Okay, and we would say you have a year.
And that one, we're good for six months, but we can grant extensions on.
Yup.
So if I said we approve the variance for the location, but we do have to get a permit for the hard surface, and you would need to have that done in a year?
Yeah.
Hey, can I just make a comment?
Yes.
Karen's interpretation, she made the comment, if my interpretation was wrong, which I don't feel hers is wrong, I think she was spot on with the zoning ordinances. But I think Steve makes a valid point about that second driveway is crucial, because that is a super dangerous intersection, I drive by that all the time, and it is very dangerous.
And by.
So I think, to me, you guys are spot on by saying, yeah, no, I think that's a good idea to keep that there, if we can come to an agreement with how should we put it in there.
And technically, it leads to a garage. Again, give and take. Technically, it leads to a garage.
Circles out, you can go up it either way.
Yeah.
Go to the garage.
And it will definitely make his family much safer exiting that driveway, trying to back out on that three-way intersection, it is super dangerous right there.
So I would make the motion to go ahead and grant the variance as long as he pulls a permit for the flatwork and has it completed within a year.
Do we need to read the sample motion?
Well, we need to rewrite it, I would think.
Excuse me?
The motion needs to be rewritten.
Yeah.
It says to allow recently installed secondary gravel driveway to remain.
Well, we can approve it with variations, though.
He's.
With conditions.
And that's just a sample.
Yeah, it's just a sample, he's made a motion. He's made a motion on the record.
So then after the sample is read, then what is the next step? I mean, once the, the motion is saying.
We make a motion to approve with conditions.
Yes.
Oh, we make a motion to approve.
With conditions.
Approve this motion.
With conditions. That he hard surfaces it? Yes.
And by hard surface asphalt or cement or concrete?
So the sample motion, the zoning board of adjustments shall grant a variance at twelve-eleven Harrison Drive to allow the recently installed secondary gravel driveway to remain. The driveway will not be required to provide access to side yard parking or a garage slash carport.
And with the condition?
That if a flatwork permit be pulled, and that it is completed within the allowed upon time.
One year. One year from today. Or when he gets a permit.
And rarely do we say yes. But again, this is a safety issue, we understand that. It just has to be compliant with your other half of your driveway. It's already there.
Okay.
I, I have a question. At, at one point in time, it was saying that it had to be blacktop, cement, or pavers. So does he have a choice? Or are we saying it has to be cement?
He, it's, has to be hard surface.
Has to be hard surface.
Whatever the ordinance.
Those are, those are his choices?
Yes.
Pavers don't work, pavers don't work real well in our area when you.
Well, especially on a, on a.
Yeah, they work in an area where you're not using a snow blower or a blade to shovel.
So are we gonna stipulate that it has to be blacktop or cement, or are we just gonna say cement?
I say whatever the ordinance allows.
Yes.
Yeah, but he's the one that's gonna have to shovel it, so I don't really care.
Well, like she said, though, pavers, especially on his slope, would probably.
I don't think he's gonna do that as an option anyway, are you, Steve?
No, not at all.
I mean, you got the hard base to put pavers on top of it, but again, that's not up to us.
And is, there's this circle, um, this circle drive that's there now, does connect to your original driveway?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, across the top.
Yeah, I'll second his motion.
With, but it wasn't read with condition, though? It was with condition?
Yes.
Of.
A flatwork permit and then the allowed.
Okay, so I'm gonna read it just real quick, so that you all understand what you're voting on.
Okay.
The zoning board of adjustments shall grant a variance to one-two-one-one Harrison Drive to allow a recently installed secondary gravel driveway to remain. The driveway will not be required to provide access to side yard or garage or carport with the condition that the flatwork permit is pulled, and the driveway is hard surfaces to meet ordinance within one year.
I'd second that.
Okay, hang on. Cliff motioned, because this got, Janet, you seconded it, okay.
Vote?
Okay, so Ed Weigle.
Yes.
Cliff Wilkerson.
Yes.
Stacy Parks.
Yes.
Janet Brown.
Yes.
James Schmerzy.
Yes.
There we go.
Thank you for your patience, Steve.
Got it all worked up for nothing, huh?
Steve, before you leave, Steve, before you leave, as a billing official, I just want to go on the record and let everybody know that we do not headhunt. So we would not just drive around and try to find something to go after somebody for. So something comes to us, we have to act upon it, and that's what happened here, so. And also with Karen doing her job as the deputy zoning official for the city, she has to work within the ordinances that are already adopted.
Right.
There's times we don't agree with them either. So we have to, where there isn't a good, clear definition of something, we have to determine that, so we have something to go off of for you to appeal. And so there was nothing personally against you throughout all this, or us headhunting you at all. It was just us doing our job, and this is all part of that process, so.
I appreciate you explaining that to me, that means a lot.
Absolutely.
But I don't feel any better about the situation.
I'm sure you don't.
And I'll, I'll, I'll explain to you why, like when Mr. Kraft was up here, and he said, for example, this is how it works. They drive around, if they see something that's an eyesore, catches their eye. He said like example, like Paul Weeds. Guess what I got across the street from my house? I got weeds this tall, and I got a, a truck on the back of it that says fuck ice. Pardon my language, ma'am. But, and then they got weeds this tall, they got a broke-down camper across the street from nineteen seventy-eight.
Yup.
It's got two tires on it. This is Catty Corner across the street from my house. And then you drive up two houses, you got a guy just putting a brand-new gravel driveway.
Yeah.
It's like, come on, who drove past that? Who drove past that to complain about mine, that's what I'm saying. I'm wondering, did somebody ask him, can you go up there? And say, hey, can you go up and, and, uh, look at this guy because that reason?
And, and our.
That's all, that's all, if I'm free to go, I'm gonna.
Actually, code enforcement is complaint-based unless they see something very obvious. Okay, so it, it is complaint, and, and it's kind of like, and I hate to go back to the speeding thing, because I know you think that's dumb, but if, if a hundred people driving down the road speeding, and the officer pulls over one person, it isn't that he had it out for you, you're just the one that he ended up grabbing. So there's lots of zoning violations in the city of Clinton, there's lots of code enforcement violations. And we have officers working really hard. We don't have the time to, you know, go out and chase people, unless I see something real obvious. But, you know, I see things going on in my neighborhood, I'm just gonna look this way, that, you know, I, I, I see things going on all the time. I don't hunt stuff down unless it's complaint-based.
There, there are complaint forms also, you can get hold of a complaint form.
Yeah.
If, if there's something that you think needs to be fixed.
I've, I've got a, I've got my own problems going on and stuff, and, and I just, I don't like to bother other people. I try to mind my own business and just, you know, I just like to do my own thing and keep going.
Steve, one last thing, when you're ready for your permit, give Karen a call. We'll get you hooked up and get you going.
But does that spring in or something?
Yep, perfect.
You don't need to pull it now.
Yeah, you're gonna be pouring, pouring concrete this winter, or paving.
I'll come back and spring and get the permit pulled.
Cool.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Have a good day.
So you're talking to your neighbor, are you talking to me?
I'm just not even looking.
Yeah.
Oh.
Oh.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
I'll second.
I said first.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks, guys.